Eric, I'm assuming that that means that we're ready to go? Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the Planning Commission Study Session tonight. And we are, first on the agenda is the Shade and Streetscape Master Plan. And that will be presented by, Amy is going to introduce, right? Or not? I don't care if you do, Amy. Very good. Very good. I think you could handle that, probably.
Okay, there we go. All right, we got it now.
There we go.
So my name's Justin Acevedo. I'm with the Design Laboratory, and we're working on the Gilbert Streetscape and Shade Master Plan. So I'm here to give you an update of where we're at so far. It's been a fun couple of months getting to the point where we're at. We're excited to share a little bit of where we're at currently and where we're going. So I'm going to go ahead and pull up the screen share here. I think that's as full screen as it's going to get. Is that sharing? Nope. Sorry, we'll try again. Technical difficulties, as always, right?
Our patience for them definitely increased through 2020.
Definitely changed a little bit. It's not me. Oh, that's a good sign. Still not going up there. What would a planning commission be without a little technical difficulty, right? I don't know.
I'm in the planning commission teams link. And I show on your screen.
It's Amy's computer.
Now let's give it a try.
It's a great picture, Amy.
I think we should be good now. Okay, without further ado, let's dive into it. Okay, so obviously, we're here to talk about the Shade and Streetscape Master Plan. Oh, no. Let's go. Sorry, switch tool. Hey, Amy. How do I change which slide it's on? I'm already into the full. We're in full screen. We already were. All right, okay. There we go. Okay. Now maybe we can make it through it. Okay, so, all right, a quick agenda that we're going to go over. I had 15 minutes, but I'm trying to do it a little faster now because I want to have it open for some Q and A. So we've got, we're going to go over some general background, where this project came from, some of the project goals we've established along the way so far. And then we're going to go through some of our data collection and numbers. So we did a large amount of tree inventory throughout the entire town over the last four months. And we'll go through some of our stakeholder and outreach that we've been going through and where we're going with that. Our implementation techniques that we've begun to create, and we're going to be going over those pretty heavily tomorrow in a technical advisory committee meeting. And we're talking about next steps from there. So our team, so I'm the project manager on this project. I'm joined by a number of other wonderful people from a number of wonderful companies. Leslie Dornfeld is our community planner from Planet. Nicholas Molsky is our certified arborist and our GIS system specialist and our drone pilot when we need some drone photos taken. Erin Allen from J2 and Jeff Holtzmeister from J2 as well. They're serving as our site design specialists. They work with you all so much here in the town that we want to make sure we had a lot of good local knowledge included as well. Sorry, I'm not sure what happened there. So we're going to dive into the background. So our mission statement really started off in this project with building a healthier, more livable community through the strategic investment and the maintenance and growth of the urban forest and engineered shade. So the reason why we took such a broad approach to this was we want to really create something that's not just focused in the idea of a tree canopy or a built system, and what is it really providing to the community itself? It provides this equal access to the ability to actually be outside. What is it providing for our community by whether it's lowering power bills, providing oxygen, capturing water? It does a number of great things for the community. But there's lots of different ways that we can do this. And so really, what we're trying to focus on is this goal of creating a more livable community in the Southwest. So our main goals that we developed as we really kicked off this process was to increase the comfort and shade through trees and structures, reduce the urban heat island effect, and increase urban cooling. Basically, just make sure the whole town's not covered in concrete, right? It's really important to us. Make sure we have some of these green spaces that are open and shaded. Create public and private connections and relationships. Long-term canopy shade health. Low-impact development and green infrastructure techniques, finding ways to make sure we have a long lifespan on these without having to overinvest in irrigation and things like that. As we know, water scarcity is particularly a hot topic this year. Create cool temperature hubs throughout the town. Ensure accessibility and education. And make sure we have a continued long-range process that can be continued to be carried out after this plan is completed. So again, the strict identified project goals are really similar. This is what came to actually start to develop our outline for what the plan's going to be. It's going to sound very similar. With a unified approach to shade and landscape, we want to make sure everybody from the public to the private realm are really starting to address shade using the same methodologies and same practices. That way, we create something that can be used by everybody. It's not just something that it's how are we going to plant a tree in a park? How are we going to plant a tree along a street? Or how do I plant a tree at home? We want to make sure we're able to kind of encompass all these different things in this plan. Implementable and feasible solutions, maintenance techniques for all, again, very important. Community outreach and education, we think, is really important. So we try to make these things nice and graphic and exciting to look at. Modular components, again, so we're taking all these pieces and they're able to be used individually. It's not just going to be a giant plan that all sits there on the shelf. We want to look at the role of structures and how those work and how they may be better in some locations versus trees and shade that provide it that way. Right tree, right place, right shade, is what we like to say. And land development code review is a big part of this as well. So some of the deliverables we get off of that are, we're really going through, and we're just looking at everything that the town's currently doing. And how can we make adjustments to this to make sure we have a strong base moving forward? We are about two-thirds of the way through the process of going through this. I think this will be available once we're done, so it's a little bit easier to read these dates. But we are down there in the, we're moving into the explorer area right now. So just to give you an idea of where we're at. And we are proposing to hopefully start to wrap up this project sometime in the beginning of September. So the data collection. So we went out, we collected a lot of data points on trees. So we went out and we individually marked, tagged, photographed, and gave a health assessment study of over 17,000 trees throughout the entire town. There's a lot of them. And this is a very small fraction of the actual amount of trees in the town. And I'll kind of walk you through how that happened. So we selected eight focus areas throughout the entire town. This was arranged from industrial complexes to malls to residential developments, different types, scales, and age. Looking at the Heritage District and really trying to get a good idea of what's happening and get a good cross-section of what's happening across the entire town. And we also documented additional 10 miles of roadway corridors to get a better understanding of what's happening in newer versus older, what different types of tree species we're looking at. So we selected these as a group, working with the town as well as our consultant team. Tree data points, so like I said, we went out, we collected and tagged every single tree that was within those areas. So we go out, we use GIS, which is our wonderful tool. We take photographs, we document how the tree is doing, what's the health of it, and exactly where it's at, that we can keep track of it in the future as well. And it also provides us a lot of information back. We run these reports called iTree Data Reports. They tell us what basically the value of the trees are, how much water they're capturing. What's the health of our canopy? It's telling us how much CO2 they capture, how much oxygen they put off. It tells us all these kind of really cool, fun things about what our canopy is. And also tells us what are the highest used and really what we should be looking for. There's little pieces that should come out as to what trees are doing really well, what trees are doing poorly. We documented things like saguaros as well, because they provide that little sliver of shade as well, right? So we really, we try to document everything that's providing any sliver of shade within that area. Structures, trees, everything are all included in this. So to give you an idea of what we're starting to get out of those different types of things, Morrison Ranch was one of the areas we looked at. So there's about a 28% shade coverage within what we call our documented areas, which is really focused on anywhere where we have public access for walkable, bikeable atmosphere. So that can include roadways. In the past, often, these types of studies have focused purely on the right-of-way. The right-of-way doesn't tell a whole story. So what we like to focus on is landscape setbacks. So anything that's affecting the right-of-way, so anything that's affecting a sidewalk or a bike lane or your ability to walk and enjoy in a park, we want to document it. And it starts to tell us, again, these types of things, like how much, what's our value of the stormwater that's being captured by these trees? What's the air quality? What's the CO2? It starts to give us dollar amounts that tells us how much our canopy is actually worth. And then we did this part. So there's two parts to how we documented the town. So we had those very specific focus areas, and then there's this really crazy-looking map where basically this is a random point generator that goes across the entire town. And we go through, and we tell it whether it is a tree, if it's a grass area, if it's dirt, if it's a road, if it's a sidewalk or driveway, a building, or if it's water. Believe it or not, there's 2% of water in Gilbert that actually is on the ground that you can see. So this gives us an idea of what the entire town is looking like, what our coverage is. So as we look at that, our total coverage across the entire town is sitting at about 10.7%. Now, that number might sound very different compared to our Morrison Ranch, but when we start to look at what is our developed area versus what is the total area, their percentages start to swing a lot higher. We're estimating currently it's going to be sitting probably around 18% coverage. So much higher, but we're still trying to get to the bottom of the numbers. There's a lot of them to go through. So with that, we're starting to develop all these different types of handouts and things that really start to educate the public as well as they're an easy, accessible thing is why we want to do these types of things. So this is an example of one of our quick little handout sheets. It's a one-off where it tells you what are the types of trees we have growing across Gilbert? How many acres of shade do we have created by trees? What are the number-one oxygen producers? What's the CO2 capture? What's the water runoff? And then just really nice, simple graphics that are easy to understand. Again, we like to be very accessible in this as much as possible. So we try to make everything to where it's a little bit more interesting, not just a large document to read, a lot of fine print. So we also hosted a number of different stakeholder meetings. So we met with our parks maintenance staff and our street staff. They are the people that tend to be the feet on the ground, that are actually looking at how things are happening within our lovely town. So they have a better insight typically of what trees are working, what are we struggling with this year? What were we struggling with over the last 10 years? They've got a really good idea of what we need to start looking at. So we met with both of these groups to really understand how it's working on both the streets and the park side. We got a lot of great information out of that. We hosted a number of stakeholder meetings with the Arizona Sustainability Alliance, which is working a lot with the town right now on increasing shade canopy and putting trees across the entire town in different parks and places, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Trees Matter Group. So these are just a couple of local folks that we're hoping can carry the torch after this is all done. Social media, so we're doing a big social media blast right now. There's been a bunch of postings over the last month and a half. They're all leading up to our public open house, which is happening on August 12th at the University Building in the Assembly Room. Really, what we're utilizing social media for is an informal type of survey. So each of those postings typically ask a question as to like, where would you want to see shade increase? Where do you think we're having issues? Where do you think we're really successful? So we can know and we can document, understand what people are really wanting from a plan like this. Our current steps that we're working through right now. So we're developing the draft implementation elements. We're just going to call it a toolbox. It's a lot simpler, a lot easier to understand. So the main portions of the toolbox are the trees, the structures, and the elements that support them. So again, right tree, right place, right shade. So the biggest thing that we always see is trees possibly planted on a spot that maybe is not providing as much. If you're like on the east or west side of a roadway, you want to make sure you're putting the tree where it's casting the most shade typically in the afternoon, because that's when it's on us outside, right? So if we invest in these and we try to get our sidewalks set up and future development in the right locations for trees and things like that, making sure we're using the right trees, casting the right amount of shade, I think we can create a really successful plan. This is our initial tree selection overview. So there's three main tiers to this. There's really, I think there's going to be a number of subsets as we continue to move through it. We have our tier-one trees, which are trees that we know are pretty bulletproof. That's kind of what we're looking at them as. They're bulletproof trees, they're very nice and green, they tend to represent Gilbert. And then we have our tier-two trees, which have a lot more color, they're a little bit different. They might not have the same level of stamina that maybe the tier-one trees have. So they might be a shorter lifespan, they might have some issues with maintenance over time. And then the tier-three are trees that we're looking at potential phase-out, really. Ash trees and sissu trees are the two main trees that we're looking at that we see all over Gilbert. The ash trees just across the other side of the complex are a great example of trees that are really starting to struggle. Even if they get a lot of water and they're in grass, ash trees are really starting to struggle here in the heat. It's both, the winter's not quite as cool, the summers are a little bit hotter. It's on two sides. And then the sissu tree just causes a lot of damage. There's a lot of these planted in the early aughts in the 2000s and the 90s where they were planted right next to sidewalks. There is probably millions and millions and millions of dollars of damage happening across the entire valley. Every week, it feels like, just from sissu trees. They lift and heave sidewalks, they cause lots of issues with utilities. So we're starting to phase those out already. So to give you an idea of what we're doing with these tree selections, we're trying to give it to where you can have these just little tiny cut-sheet pieces where it's, what's the size of the tree going to be? What's the mandatory things that you really want to know really fast? So does it drop its leaves? How far should I plant it from a sidewalk? Is it okay to plant next to a pool? We're trying to cover everything. So we're trying to do both, again, public and private. And really, one of our solutions for our existing conditions, because oftentimes, a tree falls over somewhere, right? So we want to create an online matrix where it's really easy, where we have these little cut-sheets for these plants, where we can put in, we know we have this much room between sidewalk or distance from a sidewalk. We want it to hopefully be this size, we want it to be evergreen. It's going to give you a list of three trees, right? So something really simple that, again, both public and private can access. This is a little bit more in-depth what those cut-sheets are going to look like, hopefully. So it's got all that same information we're looking at before, some more in-depth maintenance notes and planting considerations. These are just additional notes we want to make sure people know about as they're starting to dive into it. Construction solutions, so placement diagrams, what we're going to call these. So this is looking at how and where should we place trees all across Gilbert? And shade structures, can't forget those. I'm just going to go show two. We've got like two dozen of them currently. But just to give you an idea, we're looking at like, how should we appropriately place trees in parallel parking areas? Number one curse with trees in parking lots and parallel parking? They're planted too close to the bumpers of the cars, they get hit all the time. Shortens lifespan of tree, might get knocked over. Residential, we want to make sure people know how far they should plant from a house, how far they should plant from their sidewalk, how far should they plant from a pool? So these really simple diagrams that have these very simple numbers to follow that help them to move along. As well as facility diagrams. So we want to create a series of diagrams. This is the first one of looking at, if we have an area, we want to increase shade. Here's what the existing area looks like. We have a 15% shade coverage over this sidewalk. How do we increase that to 30%? How many trees does that take? How do we increase that to 40%, 50%, 60%? What does that take? Just to give an idea of if we're going back with an existing facility and we want to increase to a goal of 30%. This is what we need to do to hit that, right? So we want to do that for, what do we have to do to do that in a parking lot? What do we have to do to that, maybe a retention basin, a number of other areas as well. Structures, again, looking at all these different types of structures. I'm running out of time, I'm really sorry. Looking at how we place them, why we place them, and how we can use them. Create a small toolbox that you can easily use and draw from the Greater Phoenix Metropolitan Green Infrastructure Handbook. It's a great set of details on how to capture water off of roadways, sidewalks, anywhere and everywhere, and how to get that water into places you want to use it, like for our trees. There's so many more things, we should cover them all. But again, we're going over our maintenance guide. We're going to have some new ordinance recommendations. This is part of the Tree City USA updates that have come through in the past couple of years. The town, in order to keep the tree USA, is going to have to have a maintenance ordinance included as to what is the upkeep of the trees going to look like. We're going to look at near, far, and midterm recommendations. Practization methodologies, recommendation on policies and ordinance modifications as well. Low-impact development strategies, quarter typologies in specific locations, and educational components. Our next steps, like I said, we're going to have an open house on the 12th of August at 6:00 PM. We're going to have continued public involvement through social media and ongoing internal meetings to review the progress. I apologize, I went way too long, but thank you. I appreciate it. If you have any quick questions, I'll try to get them back to you.
Justin, you did fine.
Okay.
I mean, you took, you took 17 minutes or whatever, and we allotted you 25 or so. So I think you cranked right through it. So commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Justin?
I do. Justin, I think this is one of the most important things we as engineers do, and it's one of the things that engineers, often left to their own devices, will make everything right angles. Gray is perfectly fine of a color, and then all of a sudden, you've got Stalingrad.
I didn't say it.
The difference, the difference often is the landscaping, and nobody notices it. It's beautiful, you think you've got a great town, but you can't put a finger on why. And this is, Streetscape is usually why. But, and obviously, we're not getting way into the details. I will probably want to eventually. But you mentioned about the unified parks, private development, Streetscape, that this is something you can... I would caution, I have found that that's not a good idea. What really should be in the right-of-way fundamentally should be different than parks and private development probably can have some... They've got a lot more discretion, and for example, oak. Oak pretty much never belongs in the right-of-way. It's a hazard. It's, on the other hand, oak is wonderful.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I hope that we're not trying to, I've seen it before where particularly the maintenance people try to force everything in the entire city into one exact type of tree and make it steel and paint it green. But anyway, you get the gist, that those things should be different.
Yes, so that's part of those little spec sheets, and I get to get into them enough. Is some will be recommended for roadways and will not be recommended for roadways. Like truck trimming, obviously, is always a big concern of ours. Basically, you plant a tree too close to the street, every car that drives past, it's going to trim it because it's going to whack it a little bit and probably get some complaints from broken windshields and other things. So we're trying to include all that in there as well. It is a lot to tackle. There'll be a little separate portion that's trying to tackle streets and parks, though, as well as everything that kind of comes together.
Okay, great. And by the way, you know, your fire trucks are probably the tallest vehicles you have to plant around, right?
Yes.
All right, got it.
Yes. Commissioner Anderson.
Excuse my ignorance on this, but what's the main purpose of all this? Like, what's the end result for this project that you're working on? Is it to update the landscaped section of the LDC? Or are you creating a landscaping plan at the end of the day that the town is just going to start planting all these trees around the town? Like, what's the main purpose of this project?
So by the end of the project, the goal is to... So by the end of the project, the goal is to establish a new goal for the town as to what they want their shade coverage to be. It might look a little bit different as we start to get into the weeds here in the next month as to, we want to have separate amounts of shade coverage. If we're looking at existing development versus new development, it's going to modify a bunch of little different pieces as well as set some goals for the town for the future.
So how does that get enacted? Is that, again, is that, is it the end purpose of this going to be recommendations to the town to hear some techniques to enforce and to put into your landscape section of the LDC and developers and whoever's improving the lands go to this code? And this is kind of the new landscape requirements to create these shading effects is?
Correct. So that is one piece of it.
And what's the other piece?
So the pieces are all these little educational elements, how we maintain. We want to look at how both the town, their contractors and everyone else in the town is actually maintaining these trees, modifications to ordinances. So like one of the ones we mentioned was the, the new ordinance that will likely have to be created to continue to meet the Tree City USA requirements. Gilbert, I think has been a Tree City USA for 20 plus years now. And it's something, I don't think anybody's expressed any interest in losing as a title. But really increasing the amount of shade, it starts to bring down and battle our higher amounts of concrete as we go throughout the town. We just want to make sure we don't, like, like we're talking about with Commissioner Fay, we don't want to just make everything concrete and gray and right angles. Want to make sure we have a good balance of that. We make sure we have ways to address that. Hope to answer your question.
You mentioned something about cooling islands and kind of cooling effect that, that trees can have. Is that, I'm sure we're looking at the riparian areas that we've got as, as kind of our two prime examples of that.
We're also looking at other areas as well. So we're also working on the design assistance project through the Maricopa State Government on the power line trails that cuts through the Heritage District. That's our very first kind of focus on how we including a cooling hub. So there's going to be one hopefully just to the east side of the road. As we cut across in the power line where we're going to have an actual spot, we'll have structures to create more of a little bit more of a permanent space. We're going to look at like, how do we include water fountains, things that bring like a cooling atmosphere as well as the plants that go around it and the shade that comes to it. So it's not just structures. It's not just trees. It's not just all these pieces. It's how do we create these cooling hubs that bring it all together?
Okay. Very good. Thank you for spending your time here with us tonight, Justin.
Thank you all.
Good luck on the project. All right. With that, we'll adjourn. Let's discuss the regular meeting agenda. And it's, right now we have several items on the public hearing consent calendar, many of them actually. And then, which I don't believe that we have any that need to come off. Is that correct, Ava? Okay. And public hearing non-consent Warner Meadows, Row Homes, the condo plat for HHB. And then we have Lamb Lane. I don't see a reason why we can't put 11 and 12 up on the consent agenda as well. And because Lamb Lane has been before us a couple of times and they've spent time modifying and changing and listening to the neighbors, I think it's important that we hear the changes that they've made and congratulate them on that and thank them for that. So we'd like to hear that and give you your, your, the opportunity to, to tell you thanks for going through that process. So for that reason, I just would like to keep that on the regular agenda. Everybody, is there any opposition to that? Do we need to hear anything on items 11 and 12 as commissioners? Okay. Then we will adjourn from the, from the study session and we will call to order the regular.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
We need to take one minute break. We just want to switch channels and then we can go to the regular meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Should we take a longer break, commissioners? Does anybody need a break? We're good to go? Okay. And we'll just keep moving forward. We'll give you the break and you tell us when you're ready to go, Eric. What's that? Okay. I guess I should have asked our applicants if they were okay with being moved up to the consent agenda or if they wanted to give a presentation, so. Okay. You, you what? To add, you're okay with being on the consent agenda? Okay. I'm glad to hear it. I'm just looking at the two land use attorneys in the room and it looks like they, they really do want to speak tonight, but I don't know that. Okay. All right. Well, we'll just keep it on, keep it as we did then. Okay. Would like to have the pledge of allegiance tonight and I will lead it. We're in a small enough room that everybody can hear me, I think. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Commissioner Ashton?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fay?
Here.
Commissioner Blazer?
Here.
Chairman Bloomfield?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Okay. We discussed the agenda earlier and we're going to move items 11 and 12 up to the consent agenda and leave items 13 and 14 on the non-consent agenda and that'll be the changes. Commissioner Anderson, what can I get a?
A motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blazer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Change the agenda. Okay, with that, we have communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commissioner board response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda specific? Seeing none, we will move ahead. And we have the report from the council liaison on current events. So council member September.
The only current event we have right now, and I'm sorry, I don't have a microphone, is council is on summer break. So there's really not much going on at the moment. The council will be, will be readjusting back in early August.
Thank you, just in time. So council is on summer break right now. Council will read adjourn in early August. And I don't have any updates for the commission tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. They went out of town just in time for the town's birthday, huh? That's good. All right. Public hearing consent calendar. We have items, these, all items listed below are on the consent calendar. The commissioner board may by a single motion approve any of these items, any number of these. And is there anybody who has any conflict on any of these? Item number six, DR 2122 Wattaburger. Item number seven, S20-16 Waterston Central. Item number eight, DR 20-187 Santan Village Parcel A Shops A. And item number nine, DR 21-49 Gilbert Spectrum Buildings 9, 10 and 11. Item number 10, DR 20-179 Warner Commons, which will be continued to August 4th meeting. And then added, the item number 11, DR 21-63 Warner Meadows Row Homes. And item number 12, S21-08 HHB condo plat, which is a preliminary plat for the shops at Evans Ranch condominium, so. Commissioner Blazer, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent calendar as outlined.
Second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Ashton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Consent calendar passes unanimously. Item number 13 and 14 are general plan and zoning for Lamb Lane. And we'd like to turn the time over to a staff member, which is Commissioner Stephanie Bubenheim, who we are understanding, the real reason why we're doing this hearing tonight is so that we can hear from her. It's her last really presentation to the planning commission, so couldn't let her get out of it. That's what Ava told me, so.
That's what I hear. Okay. I just need to set this up really quick. Okay. So I'm presenting GP 2004 and Z 2009 for Lamb Lane. This site is five acres. It's located on, it's to the west of the southwest corner of Val Vista and Ray Roads. So it's outlined in red there. And this vicinity map is just to kind of show what is in this general area. Most of the area is developed, the SFD that's on the hard corner of Ray and Val Vista is currently, it's probably close to completing construction. And then just to come into this aerial map to see the site, there is an existing single family residential home on the site. And like I said, it's five acres. The general plan designation is currently two to 3.5 dwelling units per acre for residential. And the current request is to change that to 3.5 to five dwelling units per acre. So this came before you in January at a public hearing and it, the prior request was residential eight to 14 dwelling units per acre. It was a different scope and plan. So I'll show you the updated plan that I showed you at study session. And then zoning is currently single family 35. And the proposal is to update that to single family detached, which is SFD with a planned area development overlay. That overlay is just to lock in that overall site layout and design for the 18 lot, single family residential subdivision. And then there are a few deviations. They're related to the side setbacks, the lot coverage and the separation between dwelling units. And then this kind of just shows, kind of hard to see because the colors are generally the same, but the change from the general plan map to the zoning map in the area. And then to, I put in two of the main general plan conformance outlines that are a part of our updated 2020 general plan. So to encourage a balanced land use framework, under policy six, it says to support appropriate transitions between sites having district changes. So the applicant did note that the site is surrounded by a single family subdivisions, a park and a church. And the proposed density now is at 3.6, which is similar to the surrounding uses. The site is buffered by a community park to the east and the south, and then to the west is an LDS church. So it is appropriate transition to the area as opposed to what was shown before, which was a bit of a higher density. And then also to promote neighborhoods and support infill development that is kind of designed, acknowledging the surrounding context. So this site is one of the last remaining pieces of this area to be developed that it's not vacant, but it is a single family residential home. And the proposed density is similar to the surrounding area and they did design it and have some deviations that are kind of constricting the development adjacent to the single family homes. There are two homes that are adjacent to the development. So this is the development plan. To the right is Ray Road, so that's actually going to be to the north. So there'll be one access point furthest east on the site. And this is proposed to be a gated community. So there'll be a total of 18 single family residential lots. There are two tracts, tract B and tract D are the amenities, retention areas. And then at the bottom left corner is showing the current SFD standards and then the planned area development. And then I'll just go into that a little bit more on this page because I think this kind of shows what it would actually look like built out in the built environment. So the deviations proposed are ones for the maximum height. Currently in SFD, we do allow 36 feet in height and up to three stories. So this is kind of limiting or restricting the development plan to only have two stories. Lots eight, nine and 10, which are shown, see if I can do a pointer. Kind of. So the lots that are, I guess, before, southwest of the area, just north of the amenity area, they're eight, nine and 10. So these will be limited to one story due to the adjacent single family that's located to the southwest. And then for the side setbacks, they currently have zero or five feet in the code. They are requesting to do zero foot and zero foot. I'll go that, I'll go into that a little bit more on another slide. And then another deviation is the maximum lot coverage. So one of the big promotions of this new development plan is that the lots have very oversized backyards and side yards. So to kind of help maintain that, because there was a lot of discussion about outdoor area and community areas, we are limiting the lot coverage for the one story homes. So typically in SFD, you can have up to 60% lot coverage. So we're limiting that to 55%. So they can't build, like expand on the homes in the future to kind of take over that, that backyard area. Nope. This kind of shows the lot layout. So the way that the, I guess, the standard plans are designed is to have the homes towards the front of the site of each lot. And then the way that it's designed is that there is a side yard and also a backyard. So kind of trying to promote that double, larger area of the backyard. So for the deviation of zero foot setbacks on the side, the lots would, the homes would be one foot and four foot from the property lines. But in actuality, there's a five foot separation towards the front of the homes between the two lots so that they can meet that five foot setback, which is another deviation. Typically it's 10 feet, but they are requesting to do five feet. And we have seen this in SFD lots in the past. Just to go over the public hearings and all the neighborhood meetings that we have had, so the planning commission did hear this on January 6th and did continue the case due to a lot of the neighbors and the commission's concerns about the density of the original plan, which had 41 units and was multifamily low. Since then, the applicant has had a couple different neighborhood meetings. So all of these were during the quarantine time, so it was held via Zoom. So there was a neighborhood meeting on February 16th that nobody attended. The meeting that was held on February 17th, there were multiple residents. At this time, the applicant was showing a plan that had changed from the 41 units originally shown in January to 34 units. That changed the density to 6.8. A lot of the neighbors were still concerned about the density and that the development just didn't really fit into the neighborhood and just concerns about parking and how that brings a lot more people and possibly coming into the Ashland community parks and using them. After that, the applicant did decide to redesign the entire site and change the zoning request and the general plan request. So at the April 13th meeting, they had six neighbors in attendance. And that is when the applicant showed this new development plan with the single family gated 18 lot residential. And now the density is at 3.6 dwelling units per acre. Most, all the neighbors appreciated the modifications. They did still talk about some of the open space and they did just have general questions on the prices of the homes. The developer also created a website for any public feedback. And if you have any questions about that, I'm sure they can speak on that. And then I just added the preliminary plat for reference and a And then I just added the preliminary plat for reference and a zoomed-in image of that conceptual landscape plan. But staff's recommendation is to recommend approval to town council for the general plan and the rezoning case, subject to the conditions that are in the staff report that also include those deviations. So if you guys have any questions for me, I can answer. And then the applicant also has a presentation, or if you just have questions for him.
Thank you, Stephanie. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Stephanie? And before we have the applicant come and give their presentation? Okay.
Good evening. Good evening, for your record. My name is Taylor Earl with Earl &amp; Curly. Our address is 3101 North Central Avenue. Here tonight on behalf of New Village Homes, Reed Porter is here, right here to whisper in my ear if I say anything wrong. But we're excited to be here, and I'll try to do my best to not duplicate what Stephanie just mentioned because we had some material that would overlap, so I'll just kind of, you'll see me clip through some slides in order to keep it brief. But, there we go. So I thought maybe I would just pull back and just show a little visually of what we started with and kind of where it's gone. I've never worked on a project that has had this dramatic of a density cut before, and I think it's a very strong testament to the time that New Village Homes is willing to take in order to get this right. And to do something that frankly, I very much stand behind this, and I know that Reed does as well. We thought that this would be a great project, but we also are sensitive to the neighborhood feedback and the feedback of the commission. And so, you know, we have to come into the process, putting our best foot forward, but also being flexible and understanding concerns that might exist. And so the plan that was started was at 8.2, it was a 41-home community. It would be a for-rent product, single-story. And again, as Stephanie mentioned, there was concern about that. And so, you know, we went to this product here, which was 34 homes, and which was actually a very significant reduction that I was quite surprised that they could even make that work, to be quite honest. In fact, we had to go and get special dispensation from the town in order to modify the density that low, because multifamily isn't allowed to be that low in the town of Gilbert's code. It's kind of a quirk. And so we had to, we had to figure out whether that could be an exception to our PAD in order to get it that low. And so by the time we hit that neighborhood meeting, we did have a confirmation that we could do that. That first neighborhood meeting that was held was actually with the people who had attended the planning commission. We wanted them to have a special meeting where we could specifically reach out to them and walk them through the changes we had made and make sure we were having a good dialogue. There was a, you know, at that first commission meeting in January, there was an expression that, hey, I signed up to receive notices and I didn't get them. And that was, of course, very concerning for us, that where did the breakdown happen? And we sort of looked at it and think, where, where at least some, again, I don't know exactly, but when people registered for the Zoom, I think people thought that was the signing up for, for the mailing list. But actually, that's just a registration that we're required to get so we can have something to turn into the town. And so that was a good learning, that that may have been miscon, that people sort of may have assumed, and then we didn't think that they were added. And so we wanted to make sure that they had a special meeting just for them so that there was no feeling of, of, hey, I didn't get informed. And frankly, that was a big motivator behind us even asking for the continuance, because that's not how, you know, either of us want to do business at all. So we were able to show this plan. And again, some of those same lingering concerns that we felt, we just, again, Reed went back and with his wife kind of looked at it again, and that's, that's how we were able to come to this. And one of the things that had been stated was, hey, do single-family, this is a single-family community, we want you to do a single-family, you know, reduce the density down. And so I guess the bottom line is we did what we were being asked to do, is the bottom line. And the density at 3.6 is effectively within the, you know, right now, the density of the general plan goes up to 3.5. So you effectively have a lot, a half a lot, that gives us over that. So we are asking for a general plan amendment, but it's somewhat, you know, technical in that regard, in that we are effectively within that. The density is commensurate with Ashland Ranch and the other communities in the area. The home sizes will be commensurate with what's in the area. So we really feel like, you know, with infill development, as you well know, you've seen it a lot, the density is always going to be higher. By the time you bring in, you've got one last parcel, the area has completely developed, there's retail, there's, the infrastructure is in. And so there is a, the price of land goes up, and so the need in order to make that project pencil, you've got to be able to put additional units on it. So that is very common to have that happen. Yet with infill, we always want to make sure we can make it as, fit into the fabric as much as possible. The great thing about this lot is that you only have two homes that are next to it, which is pretty unheard of when you do infill. You're always looking at, there's these homes, and, and I've been used to having something not next to you for a long time. And so, you know, we had the field on the one side, the church on the other. So it's a great, really, a great infill parcel. And what we've done by adding the single-story restriction to the three lots at the bottom is how we got a lot of support. And I'll show a slide where we got letters of support from all those, those property owners right next to the site where we have that single-story restriction. So again, this is, these are going to be beautiful homes. There's four-floor plans, three are single-story, one is two-story. The square footage is in the single stories, is in that 2,200 square foot range, and our two-story is above that. But one of the great features of this, this project is the open space on each lot. It makes this project really quite unique. The sort of lime green, if you will, that's the side yard. That is more than, as you know, a lot of homes have a side yard, but it's perfunctory at best. It's five feet, it's just to get by your AC units, and you don't really get to use it. And so the way that these are designed, by bringing the front of that home out, it essentially creates a cove where you can have a very insulated side yard space, where you're getting protected from the sun, from the noise of the street. And so it's very well insulated. We have five feet at that, just that one spot in order to bring the home over to act as that shield, but the majority of that side yard is much, much beyond the city's setback requirement. And it's a very wide usable space. And then behind that, then you have all these very large, oversized, you know, backyards that have enough room for a swimming pool. And so a great feature of this particular project is the quantity of open space that is included within each lot. And as Stephanie mentioned, we are reducing the allowance for lot coverage. So normally, you would be allowed to go up to 60%. We're going to drop it to 55 and to 50, single and double story, but essentially reduction of 5% in order to sort of constrain that. And so this is what that feels like, right? One thing to look at Plan View, and then to look at, and that has a great feel. And you have the accordion glass doors that will be standard, that will be on the side or available for purchase. And so you can pull all that back, have a great indoor/outdoor living space. You know, effectively, what we see in the market is, a lot of people just want to have this. They just want to have an outdoor space. And then on top of that, we're able to have this great space and then have the entire backyard for different programming, a pool where you don't have to kind of pick and choose, you can kind of have your cake and eat it too, as it were. We have, from the street, you know, a lot of people won't be living in this, so what's, what are they going to see from the street? Well, we'll have a beautiful streetscape where we have a high-end finish with, it'll be a gated community. We're really happy the way that the elevations came out. We think it'll provide a really nice aesthetic as people pass by the site on Ray Road. And then, as I mentioned, these are the, the green stars represent the support letters that we've received. The S's represent where we have the single-story restriction next to the site. So a great site for infill, not a lot of adjacent neighbors, and those that we have are supportive of what we're proposing and including that single-story restriction. This is one of the neighbors, I think, I'll just end with this because I think it's indicative of the journey that we went on. Wendy Fitzpatrick was one of the neighbors who spoke in opposition to our case. And this is the email that she sent in. "As a resident of Ashland Ranch and neighbor of Spring Tree, I was very pleased that New Village Homes worked with the existing homeowners regarding the development of the Riggs property. New Village Homes not once but twice revised their plans to keep within the feel of the existing subdivisions. The current buildings will now be beautiful, single-family homes with a gated, within a gated community. I feel it is a testament to New Village Homes' commitment to Gilbert by working with the residents to find a solution that is acceptable to everyone. I look forward to welcoming the estates at Lamb Lane." So we're very grateful, and I think this shows that there has been a lot of effort put forward to come up with a solution that both can be developed, it has to pencil or else it's just going to be an entitlement on paper. But we, this will develop, it will be beautiful, and it's something that we've seen. The neighbors are very happy that we made, we made that change. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have anything? Questions, comments? Yes.
I just want to comment, just generally, just thanking the developers here for their efforts, meeting with us individually. They've contacted me several times throughout this process, even though I was just sitting as an alternate, and so their communication has been fantastic. They, I think they over-accommodated for the neighbors, and I've appreciated that. So thank you for all your work you've done on this, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
And I would echo that. That's the reason why I wanted to have, let you guys have your chance tonight to speak, because it really is a great thing. And while, on one, on one hand, the initial product that you brought to us, being a for-rent project, it looked cool, it would have worked, I believe that, but this, this feels totally different, and will have a great feel, and it will be a legacy project, I feel like it is, and even as an infill piece, and as small as it is. But what a great project, and that'll be a great place to live for those few people who get to live there. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no other questions? Oh, Commissioner Fay?
Mr. Earl, I am one of the people for the, that threw some cold water on the original project, and the primary concern I had was density. I certainly am in favor of private, you know, it's your property, you've got a right to develop it. I think you did a fantastic job. You actually probably went above and beyond, actually, to, and I'm hoping most of it wasn't because like you were worried that I was going to freak out on you, that it was, because you, you kind of addressed the comment and then went with economics, but, but yeah, this is, as soon as I saw this come in, I was like, wow, this is phenomenal. So thank you very much for addressing above and beyond my concerns. A little bit it was, a little bit it was open space, but it was really density, and you've hit both those out of the park from where I'm sitting. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is good development. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, we need to vote on this. We need to vote on, make a motion? Oh, we have to open it up to the public? Yes, is there any public who wants to, wishes to speak on this? We open the public hearing, close the public hearing. Okay? Bring it up to the dais. I don't know that we need to have any more discussion than what we've already had, but, so I'm willing to accept a proposal or more discussion as you see fit.
If you're open, I can go ahead and make a recommendation.
Please do.
Move to recommend a town council approval of GP 2004 Lamb Lane, a minor general plan amendment.
Second?
I'll second.
Second. Commissioner Fay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Continue on with.
For the reasons set forth, this is for Z 20-09 Lamb Lane. For the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend approval to the town council for Z 20-09 Lamb Lane as requested, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Okay, second?
Second.
Commissioner Blazers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Administrative items are next. Planning Commission minutes for the last meeting of June 2nd. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blazer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we have the last item agenda. And we get to listen to Amy for a few minutes on the LDC refresh. Item number 16.
There went the mouse. I don't drop the mouse once a day, all is not right in the world. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you, and I have a presentation and... Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. Some of you will recognize this topic, it is the Land Development Code Refresh. It's been going on, I have to admit, for two and a half years. It sounds really long, but it was an in-house effort done by staff as well as a subcommittee of town council members. So we have finally come to fruition, and we are here tonight to release it to public review for the next 21 days. So with that, I'm going to give you a little history and sort of an update on where we're at, and show you some of the high points and highlights of things to pay attention to as the document's reviewed, and then what the schedule is, where we go from here. So if you'll recall from previous presentations I've given to the planning commission in the past, the town council directed staff to open up the Land Development Code and look at it for some specific items, and I have a list of those that we'll talk about. The subcommittee was made up of council members at the time, Bridget Peterson, Eddie Cook, and Jordan Ray. So now it's Mayor Bridget Peterson, but then Councilmember Cook and Jordan Ray have gone on to other things. We had bi-weekly public meetings. The town clerk attended and took minutes. It was posted and noticed, so anyone from the public could attend. So for over 18 months, bi-weekly, we met in the conference room. And we did have people attend. In fact, we had members from various organizations throughout the state, such as Multifamily Association, we had the Wireless Association represented, we had residents come and represent topics, as well as some independent groups. And then outside of that, we also had independent outside legal counsel review it prior to it coming forward this evening. So some of the directives we were given by town council were to identify obsolete regulations in the code, clarify unclear regulations, simplify code language layout, remove redundant text, replace text with tables and graphics, and a proactive approach, meaning anticipate what question's going to be asked. If somebody's designing an accessory structure for their yard, what are the questions they typically ask? Think about it ahead of time, and how can we anticipate those questions and have it there, ready to answer so that there's a link, there's a, there's a comment, there's something that redirects them? So that was part of the goal. And then we're in input and research. Staff, over time, you'll remember that we've had text amendments come forward, and a lot of times they were in groupings. So it was like five, six, seven, maybe even 10 items that were small little items that we would pick up all at once. And those came from a spreadsheet that staff kept, based on resident comments, applicant comments, and staff comments. So we had this running spreadsheet that we had, it was pretty long, but there were a lot of things that also didn't get picked up when we did amendments, because amendment was very focused, so we couldn't just throw additional items in always. So there was a lot of those requests over time, things that we noticed, requests for clarification such as zoning interpretations. What was it people were asking about? What was confusing them in the code? Also planned area developments, you see them all the time, where they're asking to change this standard, change this regulation of the base district. Why? Is the market changed? Has the market changed? Or is it simply they're trying to maximize what's happening on their property? So trying to look at those different things, both has been asked recently and even up to five years ago. Policies and design guidelines. Sometimes we see that design guidelines can be a little bit of a struggle. What is absolute? What isn't absolute? What is the guiding factor happening? So were some of the design guidelines or policies we've been using need to get put in code? Do they need to get firmed up? Changes in the market, as I talked about, that kind of relates to the planned area development. Also, we have changes to Arizona Revised Statute or federal law, things that needed to get cross-referenced into code. And then what are just good common practices from the American Planning Association? What do we see happening around the country with certain topics? And are we up to date on that? So there are a few things we excluded from the discussions. The table for off-street parking, it is, we're planning on having a consulting firm onboard within the next year to look at our table, update it. They're going to look at Ubers and Lifts and all the different ways that people park nowadays, alternative fuel vehicles. You know, is there a need to have this much parking for this use, or has it really changed? Or has COVID changed everything? And is it going back to the way it was, or isn't it? So that's a topic we felt that it was very important to have a consultant come in and get, guide us on, that we didn't think staff should just make those decisions randomly. Wireless facilities, that is an ever-changing topic with the way the federal government has mandated certain things, the way wireless is changing with their, their different facilities over time. So that's another one, we would like to have a consultant come in and consult with us and give us guidance on. We're just, we didn't feel that in-house, we had that expertise on staff. Over-the-air devices. We didn't touch that one because, once again, it is a very specific area, a lot of antennas, dishes, those kind of things, that we felt, once again, that would be an outside consultant coming in to give us some assistance. The things that you see in orange, animals, very closely tied to municipal code. If you don't change it in municipal code, we found out you really can't change it in the Land Development Code. So until both of them are opened up at the same time would be preferred so that they're very well coordinated, we found that the table I had worked on for animals just wasn't going to happen. So, until both of them are opened up at the same time would be preferred so that they're very well coordinated, we found that the, the table I had worked on for animals just wasn't gonna happen. Common area ownership and maintenance, um, that is a, another document that's gonna be tied to the municipal code as well as enforcement. So, those, we pretty much kept hands off except for picking up typos, clarifying something that was law, or just formatting. So, general modifications. We talked about the reorganization of it. There is, over time, things got added to the code. And sometimes it was easiest just to put them at the end of a chapter. Did they really belong at the end of the chapter? Not necessarily. So, there are some things that needed to get shifted around and maybe combined. Such as the use definitions and the glossary, two different sections. A lot of people didn't understand that there were two separate sections and they go to look for what they're looking for in the one section and couldn't find it and then they thought, oh, it's not defined. Well, lo and behold, there's a whole nother section. So, we took the two sections, put them together. And the land uses are now in italics and then a general term is just in standard font. So, they're together, so you just look in one place. We also moved it to the front of the document because you have your general rules, then you have your definitions, then you kick off with all your different use categories. Another thing we also moved for was the use regulation table. When we created that matrix table, it got put at the end of the development, um, the different district regulations and the districts. People didn't know it was there. So, we moved it up to the beginning of the chapter so people could find it first because it's like, what do I want to do? Where can it go? Now I look at the district. We went in a logical progression and we took that attitude throughout the whole document when we were trying to reorganize it. So, we also, within each zoning district, we now have the zoning district base regulations on the left side. And on the right side is a graphic explaining the regulations. So, for every district, there is a graphic that goes with the district that now explains what you need to know. There's notes with it, so if there's another area, don't forget to go here, don't, you know, you need to pay attention to this. There it is, and there's already links in the table for you to be able to click it and go. Sign code. We put the sign code in tables. So, if you own a, if you own a business and you're in a commercial district, and this is my commercial district, follow it down. It tells you all the different rules for your sign that you can have on your buildings or on your property. Just follow the table down and you got it. You don't have to go reading page after page after page of text. Just follow the table. We did the same for walls and fences. And when we were working on the walls and fences, we found that there were some gray areas in there that the code really didn't address. And it's like, oh, we gotta figure this out because we can't have these gaps because it became really obvious where they were once you put it in a table format. Embedded graphics and links were another important thing. Um, we felt that in this day and age, if, if you're looking to build an accessory structure on the page that tells you your basic rules for it in your zoning district, boom, here's your link to parking, here's your link to this, here's your link to that, takes you right to where you need to go. So, you don't have to go digging through a 500-page document flipping, hoping you didn't miss something. Because really, the goal was to have a document that was usable by the general public, that a person who owns a house or a business here in Gilbert could open up this document and find what they need to find and not have it be a long, drawn-out process. That it was there for them and it was easy to read and easy to understand. And then just some consistent town branding with graphics and everything throughout, and adding all the new graphics. So, I'm not gonna read through everything in your, in your packet. I did itemize some of the key items within each zoning, well, within each section of the, the zoning code. But on a few here, I just wanna highlight in orange so that we can just bring it to everyone's attention as it moves forward to the public. We already talked about the, the base regulations and the graphic, but also on the base regulation, um, page, we added accessory structures. So, we broke out the rules for the accessory structures, made a table just for that. We're very specific, this is the height, this is where it can go, if you want to be in a setback, these are the rules. So, if you're trying to do a shop, you know your rules, you know where you stand, you're not guessing. Then on to, um, also within the accessory structures, we made sure to speak to buildings, open-air shade structures, detached garages, carports, and we added in parking structures. There were many categories such in the commercial categories where parking structures were getting to that age here in Gilbert where they are a real thing and we, we need to be prepared for them. And we need to look at heights because a lot of the accessory structures, limitations on heights, were not applicable to parking structures. And obviously in regional commercial, general commercial, some of those more intensive categories, we needed to address those specifically. And step backs. If you'll recall, on certain categories, there's a step back for once you get above the second floor, you're supposed to go back at a one-to-one ratio. And that's to allow for massing step back as well as air, sunlight, and just imposing over what could be adjacent to you. And it's usually in relationship to a residential development next door. So, um, we did adjust the step back and how and where it's measured from based on whether you're in a commercial category or in, you're in the heritage district. So, those two are now a little bit different. Then, um, the use regulation table, I am not gonna go through every page of what got changed, but I tried to highlight the lines or boxes that did get changed. So, if you see a line going all the way across the page, such as dormitories, it's a new category we didn't have before. It was time to come up and add dormitories into it. We do have a dormitory apartment building here in town. If you see, um, where it's just highlighting a bunch of the L, which are limitations, that's saying we either added a limitation or one of the limitations changed. Outpatient Surgery Center, another one that was added in. So, as we flipped through, you can see I tried to be as thorough as possible highlighting what got changed. But I do wanna point out on this page where you see the skinny yellow lines, that's representing the two categories, land use categories that got deleted from the code. One is mining and quarrying. And one was a redundant one that was already taken care of in one of the other, um, uses. It was sort of a, a main title that didn't need to be there. So, but I did go ahead and highlight that for you. And we added community gardens in. We have had requests for those quite a bit lately, especially since COVID occurred. So, um, the land use regulation or the Ls, the limitations, um, I didn't highlight all the new ones, but they did shuffle around a bit. A few things changed here and there, but they're highlighted on the main table. Under single-family homes, one of the things I wanted to point out here is we did add a provision allowing additional lot coverage for homes that were built over 20 years ago. And that's to help encourage redevelopment in your own neighborhood. Instead of moving out, way out of town to a new development, put your money back in your house, redevelop it. And so, we added a little bit additional lot coverage to allow for that little bit of expansion because as we know, a lot of the builders max out their lot coverage. And then, where do you go from there? You can either go up or you have to go. And we want people to stay here in Gilbert. We want them to reinvest in their homes. So, it was our way of thinking outside of the box of, okay, how can we encourage people to renovate their existing home? As we move into the PDU overlays, we were, we clarified some of the language with, um, the planned area developments and what could be modified and what couldn't be modified. We also, in the Heritage District, sat limitate, well, the stories weren't listed. It was just the height was listed in the Heritage District. Every other zoning district in the town had the height plus the maneuver story. So, we went ahead and added the number of stories. In SF6, we added minimum and maximum lot sizes. And the reason for that is in Lacy Tract, which is the SF6 in the downtown Heritage District, is, um, it has a specific character for a reason. And if you allow lot splits too small or lot combinations too large, the character of Lacy Tract is no longer the character that people wanted to maintain. So, that was one of the, um, suggestions that was made there. And we did take it to redevelopment commission for discussion. All of these went to redevelopment commission study session a while back, just as I, I brought chapter three to you all for a study session. We did reduce the common area open space requirement from 40% to 35 in downtown for commercial, or for multi-family low, sorry. And that was because we were finding that the developments were having almost an impossible time meeting 40% in such small confines. Because a lot of the MFL down there is more duplex, quadplex. We're not seeing it go vertical yet. It's still redeveloping some of the older homes and, um, some of the older units that are down there. Street tree spacing, that actually got changed in more than one area in the code. And that's because we found that it was actually, one, one, one tree every 20 feet was too close together and they were smothering themselves. And so, every so many trees were dying out. So, this is to help with the longevity of the tree and, and to the health of the, the overall health of the tree. And I think as Justin was telling you earlier in the study session, there are some changes that they're gonna recommend to us and we'll probably have to pick some of those up in the land development code as we go along. But, we didn't wanna hold up the decisions that were already made because we think these are good decisions and we think they'll be reinforced by some of the comments that Justin comes forward with. We already talked about building step back changing. Added a little bit of flexibility for schools and places of worship with temporary structures. The logic there is, um, a lot of times a school needs to bring in a temporary modular unit or a trailer because they're gonna do construction. Makes sense, right? Well, it said you had to have an active permit and you couldn't bring the trailer on until you had the permit. Well, that doesn't really work with the logistics of it. You need that trailer on a month or so ahead of time so you can shift things over, get your utilities hooked up, get the kids settled in, and then go gut your other building. You know, so, we, we just gave it a little, uh, latitude there so that there was room, um, for the reality of how construction works. And then, uh, we removed tattoo parlors from non-traditional businesses and that was due to, uh, change in state law. So, they are a free, free speech and that cannot be regulated in that way. So, also, um, one of the main things I wanted to talk about was when I talk about, uh, the single-family section, um, secondary dwelling and guest quarters currently are allowed on single-family dwelling lot, or single-family lots from SF43 all the way down to SF6. And so, you're allowed a secondary dwelling if you have a use permit and you can have a guest quarter in addition to that, but the guest quarter cannot be rented. We combined those following good practices around the country of accessory dwelling units and said you get one on your property. You can rent it, you can have a full kitchen, but, um, it can only be a certain size and you don't have to get an, uh, an administrative use permit anymore. You can go ahead and have it by right, you get a permit, move forward. But it can only be 50% of the livable area of your primary structure of your house. So, and why, why do that? Well, we were finding that some accessory dwellings were coming on properties. The main house was 5,000 square feet and the secondary dwelling was 5,000 square feet. You might remember one or two of those cases that have come before you over time. Back when a use permit was required and before we changed it to accessory or an administrative use permit. And so, that's not really in keeping with the idea of a secondary unit. Those are basically primary units and you just created a, a larger lot that has two main houses on it. That wasn't the intent to those large lot neighborhoods. And so, we did a lot of research. And so, a lot of these changes that were made, there were yellow dots running all over the markups because, um, council members kept asking, can you go research the common practices with other municipalities in the area? Can you look across the country and see what the best practices are? And that's where some of these came from. And that's where the accessory dwelling unit changes came from. It also will, will still allow for vacation rental by owners, but you're not gonna have two or three onsite now. You'll have one if it is operating as one instead of multiple. So, moving on to, uh, limiting perimeter walls and fences in the Heritage District and Gateway, keeping them lower, keeping it more open. It was supposed to be a more pedestrian-friendly environment. Eight-foot walls and fences are not encouraged in those areas. We want the downtown to be open. We want it to be an urban environment. Same with the Gateway, Cooley Village, Cooley Center. We, I mean, as I mentioned before, we created walls and a fence table, um, for clarification. And there is still the wall and fence modification that is permitted that you have seen over time. It does come to Planning Commission. But we clarified what could be modified and we're saying now, it's not just a separation wall, meaning sits on the property line. We are now gonna allow that walls and fences, even internal to the site, can be modified by the Planning Commission. It's not gonna be a planned area development modification. It is something that, it can be brought to the Planning Commission. So, it's not a rezoning issue and adding extra time to a project. In circulation and parking, as I said, we did not touch the main table, but there were a few things that we did, um, adjust in the main text. We added some offsite parking of, um, allowance in the Gateway zoning district, very similar to what's allowed in the Heritage District. Added, uh, some language for landlocked parcels and not allowing for landlocked parcels. You have to have access to a parcel. There must be an easement, there must be a street, there must be some way to get to a parcel. Addressing tandem parking. We had allowed it before, not only in single-family residences, in garages, but it, it had been allowed in multi-family, but that was in addition to the required parking. So, now we're clear about tandem, what is and isn't allowed and how it's counted. Minimum residential garage dimensions. And it's been a conversation many times over the years when it was design review and now it's planning commission about, um, some garages that you can't fit a truck in, you can't fit a suburban in, you can't even fit an Expedition in. Let's go down to an Explorer, maybe. So, because the, the water heater was protruding into the garage or there was a step and you couldn't fit your car far enough in, or it was just small. I mean, and we had no regulation for what the size of a garage needed to be. So, they, the builder can make it anything they want, but then you ended up having most of the people parking outside or on the street because they didn't fit. And we already know the challenge that comes with garages and storage. So, um, we just tried to make the garage usable for a car. And then, the welcome to Gilbert signs. I believe we have all the ones that were required based on incoming traffic into the town of Gilbert. So, we took out the design of the sign, which was somewhat dated, to be quite honest. And we said, if you have a sign there, you need to maintain it and it needs to match the, the vernacular of the center or location in which it's located. Then, um, in signs, most of the signs stayed the same. Very little about the signs changed other than reorganizing it. But we did add a little bit of flexibility for the kinds of signs and the size of signs on multi-story buildings. Adding for some vertical signage, adding for how you, how you just distribute some of the square footages. And then, um, the last but not least, chapter three, which you all did see at a study session, uh, for engineering. We did allow staff to approve and amend some preliminary plat and open space plans as long as the amendment was consistent with the intent of the original plat. We also added some provisions for condominium plats, provisions for land, uh, land divisions or lot splits, and language for corrective plats. So, as far as that, where do we go from here? That was, that was the sum total, main, main guts of our document here. So, over the next 21 days, there's a public review and comment period. The document has been put out to the web on its own page. The link is on the planning page under the land development code and it's going to be blasted out on social media as well as our digital team is helping to reach out to, uh, various other groups and, um, links that can help us out with that. We are, um, going to be sending out notices to various, um, groups and, uh, that we work with on a regular basis, so they're aware of it. We will be going to the redevelopment commission at the 7/21 meeting and discussing the changes in the Heritage District that I pointed out to you this evening. We'll be back to you on August 4th to discuss comments from the public. So, let me, let me just explain how we're gonna look at the comments from the public so I can put some parameters on there for everyone. If the comment from the public is, there's a typo in the document, there's, something's out of place, you missed, there's a sentence missing, I don't understand what you mean, and we can easily fix them, they'll be fixed. Typos, all that will be fixed if there are any. But, any other changes need to be within the parameters of the guidance we were given by town council for what was being changed. That committee went page by page through the document to make the changes and discussed them and researched them quite a bit. So, we're not gonna just randomly take changes that need to be properly researched and vetted and just insert them. So, we're gonna create a couple parking lots. One parking lot that you're gonna see is items that can be picked up that people have identified that we feel meet the parameters of the guidance we were given. There's gonna be another parking lot that's gonna start the next round of spreadsheet of things to pick up in the future that need to be discussed. And then, there's gonna be items that maybe don't 100% meet the parameters of this, but we're going to possibly bring them forward to town council for discussion and, and planning commission for discussion to see if it's something that needs to get adjusted or it's directly tied to something in the code that we made a change here. Should this change that's in association with it be addressed here or should it be put to the parking lot? So, I want questions, please. As much feedback as possible is great. And whether it gets put in a parking lot, please don't think that the parking lot's gonna be forgotten. We did not forget the parking lot. Here is our parking lot from all these years we've been, we've been following it. So, um, we will address them, we will look at them, and we will bring forward the comments. And I will be creating a database from all those comments so I can itemize what the comment was, who it came from, if it's identified, and how to track it. After the PC, uh, Planning Commission study session on 8/4, I'm gonna go back to the redevelopment commission on 8/18 and ask for a recommendation to the Planning Commission for approval or denial. And then, Planning Commission will make their recommendation on 9/1 to town council. And then, town council will hear the land development code refresh on 9/21, um, for final action. And that sums it up. So, um, thank you for listening to me and I, if you have any questions or you'd like to discuss any of... discuss any of the changes made, clarifications, I'm available. And the feedback is ldcfeedback@gilbertaz.gov, and that is an email address that is specifically just for this document's comments, and I look forward to seeing them all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Man, you've done a lot of work over the last few months. I hope you take the next 21 days off. No, just kidding. No, thank you for that. And I can, I can already see the value and the benefit of all of that effort coming, and to be able to have a member of the community be able to access the LDC and understand what it's talking about and have the hyperlinks and different things, that'll be huge. I, I struggled with that as, as a consultant, and felt like it was difficult for me, and how, how would a person, you know, how would a member of the community or property owner go through that was a challenge, so I appreciate the effort, and it sounds like it's been fruitful already, so. Is there any comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Blazer.
I just want to say thank you. I appreciate your passion about just, just improving things and making our town better. It just, it comes through as you present, so I just, I really appreciate it, and I'm all behind it. I'm excited to review the changes, and, and I just really appreciate the effort and the passion behind it, so thank you. I know a lot of, a lot of people were involved, but clearly you were leading the way, and just, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner.
Amy, just a quick question for you. So when 9/21 comes and if council ends up approving it, when does the document go into effect, and is there going to be a buffer period for people that are currently designing under the current design code, like, kind of like they do with the building codes? Like, there's a window there where you can still be under the existing LDC, and then once, there's going to be a hard data, so, all right, this is when we're turning all projects over to the new, new LDC?
I would love to quote that exact chap, or that exact paragraph, but it is in the first chapter of the code, and it does talk about transition periods between old codes and new codes, and it does lay out the rules for that, the rules of transition. And as far as the codification, it's a 30-day process after town council review and approval.
Great question. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We have now the report from Chairman and members of the Commission on current events. I don't have any. Where's the Commission? Gilbert does seem like a ghost town since July 1st, kind of rolled around, but, you know, whatever. Item number 18, Ava, Planning Services.
Thank you, Chairman. First off, I'd like to announce that we do have a new Planner 1, Samantha Novotny. She was one of our planning technicians, and she has been promoted to Planning 1, so you'll see her at some of the coming meetings, we'll start giving her cases. We still have two Planner 2 positions open and a Senior Planner position open, so our current staff is carrying a heavier load than normal, but we hope to get those positions filled soon. And the second thing, I just want to thank everybody for their patience, and everybody IT staff, Town Manager's Office, to get us in this temporary room that we'll be in probably for the next 14 months. So I just appreciate everybody bearing with us with the technical difficulties, and we'll probably get the hang of it in a couple of more months, and then we'll be ready to head back over to Muni 1. So thank you all for your patience and for your assistance.
Sure. Okay. With that, we can adjourn. We'll see you all next month. Thank you.